Good evening. I'd like to go ahead and call to order the Marin Municipal Water District Watershed Special Committee of 29 February 2024 in special board meeting. Terry, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, good evening. Director Ranjeve Kush.
Here.
Director Larry Russell.
Here.
Director Jed Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Monte Schmidt.
Here.
And Chair Matt Sampson.
Here. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any comments?
On the agenda, there are none.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Director Kush.
Hi.
Director Russell.
Hi.
Director Smith.
Hi.
Vice Chair Schmidt.
Hi.
And Chair Sampson.
Hi.
Thank you.
Great. Before we move to our regular agenda item, and tonight we'll be discussing just the rollout of our watershed recreation management feasibility study, I'd like to go ahead and welcome everybody. And start off with a thank you to our Board Secretary and Public Affairs Communications Manager for the flexibility to make this happen tonight here in this different room, as well as the City of Santa Fe for the hospitality for allowing us to invade their space for an evening. But I also like to acknowledge the public, not only here but online and the folks that have engaged over the past five to 10 years on this. Your patience has been, has been recognized as the district looks to reevaluate our recreational opportunities on our lands. And doing so in responsible and meaningful ways, not to deviate from our core mission. And again, that mission is to provide high quality water while maintaining the health of our watershed and its environment. You know, this type of engagement from everyone here tonight really reinforces one thing, and that's that we have a very engaged community and customers who not only value the water district, but also the lands that we call Mount Tam and our watershed, the 22,000 acres. But it also recognizes the commitment that everyone has and understanding about how much of a gem and something special we have in our own backyard and that we like to preserve it and, and actually make it hopefully improved for generations to come of this. But I also like to acknowledge staff as well. You know, we have a group of dedicated individuals that have helped facilitate a process that's going on for some time now, and they've taken us to where we are at here at this evening. Sean Horn and his team, not only just the Rangers, but the resource managers, ecologists, biologists, and others from assisting agencies care deeply about the health of our watershed and continue to move in ways to preserve its health and associated habitat. Staff have facilitated a process that have prioritized public engagement. We've had over eight public meetings or workshops, and I don't even begin to try and count the number of meetings that staff has engaged with stakeholders on various times to hear their opinions and to provide an opportunity for them to give feedback in this process. I commend Sean and his team for the continued outreach and availability to meet with the public and to ensure your voices are all heard. This process really began at the beginning of the Citizens Advisory Committee on E-Bike Use on the Watershed. It seemed protracted at times and sometimes appearing without clear direction. In fact, it doesn't go unnoticed that we've chosen a leap year date of February 29th before this meeting. But this time has actually provided a benefit and allowed us to really complete a comprehensive study and one that will present options while at the same time, including, you know, prioritizing water quality, environmental priorities. This study is a result of an evolving recreational need throughout our community. One that should responsibly be responsibly incorporated into our watershed. But with anything new, specifically this type of process, we must take a measured approach, one that is flexible and adaptive and understanding that we should make decisions that can be easily undone should anything not be best for our watershed. And this board is taking this process very seriously. You know, it's evident in the room we're in tonight, changing venues to make sure that we can incorporate a public and hear all of your voices and get all of your input as we move forward on this, on this program. And we also want to move forward throughout this evening and provide clear guidance and decision and direction to staff so they can incorporate this in the final plan. But part of that is hearing from you, everyone here tonight, both in the room and online. We're going to hear a lot of differing perspectives tonight. But I think when we look at the core of why we're all here, we are much more alike and similar than we are different. I'd like to ask for respect for everybody tonight based on your various opinions and understand that everybody is here with the understanding that we want to preserve the mountain the best we can so that we can continue to enjoy it for years. But once we move past the presentation tonight and take public comment, I'm going to be asking that we keep our comments to 90 seconds of respect for everyone's time. This way we can all be heard without staying up too late. And I ask if the school age folks in the audience would like to go first, we can give them a head of the line pass if you're, if you're interested in coming. All right. And then additionally on the comments with a public. If something's been said and you come up and reiterate, meaning you just let, let the board know that you agree with that past speaker, we'll hear that and we understand that too. So, but we also want to make sure that you're, you're heard and be able to say what you like. So with that, we'll go ahead and start the meeting and we'll begin with item 3A, Draft Watershed Recreation Management Planning Feasibility Study.
Yeah, good. Good evening, Director Sean Horn, Director of Watershed Resources. Tonight, we're going to give you a presentation. It's going to be about 20 minutes. That summarizes the draft watershed recreation management planning feasibility study. And I'll just note that we've got Brian from Alta, Planning and Design, who helped us develop this document. We also have our Ranger staff in the room, our Chief Ranger and our Natural Resource Manager. Both those groups were instrumental in developing this and supporting it throughout the process. So with that, I'll move into the presentation. So for tonight, we're going to provide just a brief overview of the planning process and then talk through the structure of the watershed recreation management planning feasibility study and then really hone in on the strategic opportunities that are identified that were built out of the public workshop and engagement and the input that we received from the community. And break those down for you a little further than what we did in the plan. So you have some clarity around what we're thinking and moving towards. As Director Sampson mentioned, you know, really this couldn't have been possible without all the community participation and the interest that this community brings to the mountain. Then I think it just speaks to.
I apologize. Your screen presentation is not up.
All right. The fact that we had so many people participating in the community workshops, I think just speaks to the real love and appreciation that everyone has for Mount Tam and being part of it and participating in the stewardship of the mountain. So the planning process, right, it is guided by Board Policy 7, which speaks to adaptive visitor management, talks about how the district will continue to monitor its natural resources and take temperature of visitors on the mountain to think about points of intervention that might be necessary and ways that we can improve our operations and our management of the watershed. It did start with the E-Bike Community Advisory Committee in 2019 where we started to evaluate options. There wasn't a decision made out of that process, but there was a consensus that evaluating watershed visitation holistically was a key thing for the district to continue to do. And that led us to developing the watershed recreation management planning feasibility study. We started it out with two initial scoping meetings and we had support and direction from a professor at Oregon State, who's Ashley D. Antonio, who is a professor in Recreation Ecology. And she helped to guide some of that initial scoping to help our community think about what a planning process would be and how we could start to develop the desired conditions and future desired conditions that they might want to see out of it. So we went from that to six public workshops and I think that's a significant amount of workshops and I can't emphasize enough that it's impressive that we had so much good dialogue and kind of constructive conversation. Not everyone agreed all the time, but it was respectful. And I think that says a lot about people's interest in seeing things move forward on the mountain. From that, we had two watershed site visits where people came out to the watershed and we tried to connect them to different programs that the district is already working on and just help support the vision of this process through being in that place. We did a watershed visitor census survey update. So the last one we had done was in 2013. This brought a lot of new information to us and helped us understand kind of how people are feeling and experiencing the mountain. We also integrated new technology through the use of eco counters, Strava data, streetlight data, just to understand the patterns of use. And that's summarized in the report. And then throughout this process, we've given eight updates to the watershed committee. I believe this would be our ninth. So the planning objective is to evaluate the current patterns of watershed visitation while collecting community input on current conditions and future desired conditions. We were considering opportunities for continuing to support safe, inclusive access with an emphasis on protecting the watershed's unique biodiversity, habitat, and water quality. I'm going to hand it over to Brian. He's going to walk us through the feasibility study and the various sections. And we'll do this fairly briefly because you all have the document now, but we wanted to give a high level overview.
Thanks, Sean. So the feasibility study was broken into five primary sections. We'll go and then in the following slides, we'll go over each one in a little bit of detail. Two things to point out here, the visitor census survey utilized new technology to capture accurate user data, user data. And it was the census survey, its first update in 11 years. And then the community input we received through our robust community outreach prod process is really what led into our strategic opportunities, which is the, the final piece of the plan and what Sean will be talking about when I pass the mic back to him. So the introduction, the first part of the plan was really an overview of the planning process. It discussed the goals that were developed during our outreach and provides a little more information on the background of the watershed and Marin water. So the feasibility study goals were really developed in part during the breakout group working sessions of public workshop number two. And through that process, we came up with four primary goals and they're here. Goal number one, protect water quality and steward natural resources to support biodiversity. Goal number two, strengthen and expand community-based stewardship opportunities to care for the mountains' natural and recreational resources. Goal number three, maintain a sustainable network of roads and trails that support visitors and a variety of recreational uses. And finally, goal number four, adaptively manage recreation to increase equitable access and respond to changing environmental conditions and visitor needs. As part of that first, first section, there was also a review of the environmental, environmental setting on the watershed. And that really summarizes the current baseline information that exists. We all know there's been a lot of work previously done on the watershed to study the environments and this was a place to kind of gather that and put it in one location. So you'll find information on vegetation, wildlife, geology, and soils. And the hope is that summarizing it in this document can really act as a tool and support future environmental work moving forward. We all know there's, there's over a thousand species of plants and 400 species of wildlife across the watershed. So this is a very important piece of any recreation management that occurs. Section two, provided a little more information on the, the setting that currently exists on the watershed. It summarizes the existing road and trails network as well as other infrastructure on the watershed like trailheads, restrooms, picnic areas, et cetera. It describes the, the current visitor management and how visitors are regulated once they're on the watershed. And then it also provides a review of existing stewardship programs that are currently taking place, such as the collaboration, ongoing collaboration with One Tam. The work with local schools and also the work that the district is doing by providing wildlife docents on the watershed. Section three is a review of the data collected during the census survey process and one of the primary outcomes of this study was to provide an update to the 2012 census survey. And for this update, the district used a, used a variety of data sources, including eco counters, Strava Metro. And as well as in-person and virtual surveys to capture data and input. And what we learned through this robust process was that primarily visitors are largely engaging in the same activities in 2022 as they were in 2012. That we saw a slight increase in hiking as well as an increase in e-bike use in 2022 when compared to 2012. We also learned that trail and fire road conditions, as well as interactions with other visitors on the watershed were viewed as either, they were viewed as either good or great by the majority of respondents that we collected information from. And then perhaps most importantly is a significant majority also reported feeling safe across the watershed. Section four summarizes the summarizes the.
Quickly, Brian. We're going to have different opinions, folks, tonight. Let's, but let's keep it respectful. We have a contractor here that's coming to provide us an overview of a project that's gone on now for over half a decade. And so we'd like to allow him to continue. Thank you.
Thanks. And then section three summarizes the community outreach that occurred. And as we were getting going on this, it was determined that the community wanted and should be heavily involved in the process. So we kind of reworked our original scope to involve more, more outreach. And as part of that, the district engaged with park visitors and residents in a variety of ways, including in-person and virtual surveys, mini-community workshops, out in the field, site visits and one-on-one interviews. And the result of that is was six community workshops, two watershed site visits and over 20 interviews with key stakeholder groups. And as part of the, the outreach, we also pulled in outside experts to help facilitate the discussion and cover some of the technical components of our work. And that includes, Sean mentioned her earlier, but a professor in nature-based recreation from Oregon State, as well as representatives from Latino Outdoors, Santa Cruz Mountain Trail Stewardship and Santa Cruz Land Trust. And that feedback that we, we captured and, and collated during all of this outreach is really what we're, we're using to help guide the, the strategic opportunities and next steps. And important areas of interest that we heard include that there's really a desire to experience Mount Tam in a variety of ways. The public's looking for increased stewardship opportunities to interact with the watershed. As well as how can we explore how trails and roads can be improved to support various visitor groups?
So in the document, in addition to the sections that Brian just summarized, there's a few appendices. There's an annotated bibliography that brought together a lot of literature that's available on Mount Tam to provide a resource for future studies as well as to, to the community if they have an interest in exploring more. There's also the online survey data that came from the visitor census survey. And there's also a recreational zoning framework that we intend to expand as part of an update to a roads and trails plan in the future. But the, the final section of the document is the strategic opportunities and we organize them around stewardship, visitor outreach services, watershed facilities, policies and plans, and adaptive management. And we're going to kind of dive into all of these, but I just want to note that there's a few themes that run through all of these. There's a theme of building capacity within our, building technical capacity within our staff as well as our volunteers for trail and natural resource stewardship. There's a theme that runs through this about how can we better connect visitors to the mountain and tell the story of place. Thinking about that through interpretation, signage and outreach. There's a theme within these strategic opportunities around doing data collection to inform environmental documents moving forward for SEQA. And then right adaptive management, how can we bring in modern best practices to update a roads and trails plan long-term to help us better manage the watershed and be good stewards? So within the stewardship, these are, this is how we've presented these concepts in the, in the plan. And I'm going to dive into each of these bullets in the subsequent slides. But we're sustaining our habitat restoration, looking to expand volunteer opportunities for trail stewardship stewardship and maintenance, looking at trail ambassadors and volunteer trainings. Thinking about One Tam and how we collaborate with that group and how we can better serve various parts of our community, wildlife docent programs and how we can continue to sustain those natural resource interpretation offerings and how we can prioritize non-system trail decommissioning and restoration as part of an update to a roads and trails plan. And we'll speak more directly to that final point in, in our final slide around roads and trails. So trail stewardship. We do envision moving forward with monthly trail volunteer opportunities, really to engage local nonprofits and community members and being part of the stewardship mission of the district, increasing trail maintenance activities on the watershed generally through that partnership with our local community and then aligning volunteer events around some of the pilot programs that we're presenting here. Thinking that there's going to be some adjustments that we need to make and we're going to be relying on some of these folks to help us do those. Annual ambassador training, this is something that we spearheaded last year and we've been continuing to do and we're going to do another one this year. We brought Santa Cruz Mountain Trail Stewardship Group in to help us do training for our seasonal staff around trail maintenance, really building capacity and technical skills. We want to improve our seasonal staff's capabilities to run volunteer programs and ensure that we're scaling our stewardship activities and really providing our youth with an opportunity to engage in the mountain, whether it's be our cross-country teams or mountain bike teams or other community groups. And then sustain our watershed volunteer habitat restoration offerings. We have a good suite of programs and we're just acknowledging that as part of our stewardship, it includes sustaining those. So we also are, you know, working collaboratively with One Tam, all the land managers in Marin. And there's in the strategic plan for One Tam, there's an initiative around how do we better serve and connect to various parts of the community. So we wanted to highlight that in this document. The wildlife docent programs the district currently runs relate to yellow-legged frog, turtles, and a wildlife picture index. We in, envision sustaining those and, and learning and thinking about how we can better present those to the community and gauge folks in those programs. As part of that, the district is thinking about how we can use our Ranger Trainee Program, which we launched this last year in a new way to help with outreach and interpretation and supporting those wildlife docent events. And enhance really the educational offerings that we're doing with our, our visitors on the watershed. The sec, the next strategic opportunity is about visitor outreach services. Just recognizing we have kiosk signs. Those are a great way for us to connect with our community and to provide that messaging around natural resource stewardship, water quality protection and recreation. So our kiosk could use a refresh and this is a great opportunity to do that. Our visitor map, we have a, you know, a fairly stagnant visitor map and that could be updated. We see some great signage on Marin County Parks land with, you know, pop-out maps showing routes that you can use and just thinking about how we can better present the recreational opportunities through maps. And then thinking about how we can have an offline GPS capabilities to help people navigate. Our Ranger and Natural Resource Interpretation Quarterly Events, this is something we want to make sure that we sustain and bring more resources to. And so we're thinking about our Ranger trainees and how they can kind of sustain a quarterly event to bring people out for various things. You can think about a, you know, historical hike on Mount Tam, a wildflower hike during the wildflower seasons. If we do a prescribed burn, doing a site visit to that to try to see some of those fire following species that might come back and do interpretation around it. And then what we did on Lake Lagunitas this last year as part of our forestry restoration work was develop a self-guided tour. And we think there's more opportunities for that as well. So with the watershed signage updates, we're really focusing on water supply and natural resource messaging, storytelling to connect people in new ways, really having engaging content online on our, on the watershed and trying to bring them out into people where we can. And then raise awareness about the Mount Tam Foundation Fund where people can provide voluntary donations to help us with our stewardship activities on the watershed. And then as I mentioned, right, improving our, our watershed visitor map. The third strategy was around watershed facilities, policies and plans. If you go next door to the library, you can check out a library pass. We want to sustain that program to get people on the watershed. And we have slow zones and then we've got a number of pilot programs. And I'm not going to read this list because the next few slides go through all of these elements. So parking, we do charge for parking in some locations. As I mentioned, there's a parking pass program through the library. We also want to evaluate low-income parking passes for customers. So thinking about how we can provide that to our ratepayers and then improving bike parking and just fix-it stations. And the recreation feasibility study has a number of other things, water fountains, some of these amenities that we just, you know, we're out on the watershed recreating that we would benefit from and we can expand some of those items. We do have slow zones on the watershed and we support the slow and say hello campaign. So we want to continue that. And we do see opportunities to expand those in certain corridors. Accessibility, you know, we really want to improve how people can interact with the watershed and we, we see a need to develop an accessibility list of priority opportunities that we can do. And as part of that, thinking about updating our other power-driven mobility device policy to include e-bikes, which is one of the recommendations that came out of the e-bike CAC and would be beneficial to move forward with. The pilot programs that we're presenting here, the first one relates to multi-use trail and bike access for single-track experience. Really what we heard from folks was they wanted us to test different methods for this and see if they could share a trail in some way. And so we're thinking about developing a pilot program that would evaluate directional trail sharing, days of the week, strategic connections and loops. And this would allow us to gather information to inform SEQA and programmatic updates. This is kind of key in terms of giving us an initial step in here, but we would do it in a very targeted way on very specific trails initially. And then as part of our roads and trails plan, expand that thinking a little bit. And then the second pilot study that we'd be suggesting that we move forward with is an e-bike class one pilot study, formalizing access for a three-year period for e-bikes. And again, this is to gather information to inform SEQA. So it would be a methodology that we'd bring back to the board at a future meeting to review how we'd roll these programs out and where they would work. And for the pilot study for e-bikes, that would be anywhere that bikes are allowed. This all helps us gather data to inform and update to our roads and trails plan. Our roads and trails plan document is from 2005. We have learned a lot since that time. We've got new best management practices that could be integrated in this. We have a trail classification system that's outlined in there. There's one classification for future use and we see an opportunity to prescribe that to bike trails and think about holistically on the watershed, how we can make strategic connections and be thoughtful about how people move across the landscape and connect with it and the experiences that the district is providing. So that's really what the program, the pilot program is about, is helping us guide that process. And then our project restore program was something that was developed out of our roads and trails project about trying to erase social trails on the mountain. I think we have to acknowledge that social trails are there because people are using it. It's not, you can hike wherever you would like, and that's why they've been established over the years. Our 2005 document highlighted a number of trails that could be closed down, which is kind of beyond what the district had the capacity to do in that timeframe. So what we're thinking about here is developing a 10-year program that could allow us to think about access and think about decommissioning so that we have a net environmental benefit at the end of it. It's very similar to what we're doing in Azalea Hill and we'd be more targeted here as we start to think about which social trails are having the largest impact and could be restored and erased from the landscape. And where could we create sustainable trail networks? And that might be a combination of using existing trails, social trails, but being cognizant that a lot of the trails we have are historic remnant features on the landscape and might not have been designed how we would design them today. So that's the thought process here as we think about updating a roads and trails plan. Really about visitor management and experience and being thoughtful about that. In the feasibility study, we do present the zoning framework, which we discussed during one of the workshops. That would be a key piece that we'd bring forward to help us protect natural resources while we're thinking about visitor access. And then, as I mentioned, we'd incorporate modern best management practices, restoration and stewardship initiatives into this updated plan. The final strategic opportunity is around adaptive management. And this is really consistent with what our board policy directs us to do. But thinking about, you know, a continuous update of our visitor census survey over 10 years, allowing us to check in on how people are experiencing the mountain, continuing with our biological monitoring programs that we currently have, continuing to have staff expertise participating in the One Tam Peak Health Update and bringing that data together so that we're holistically looking at Mount Tam with our other partners and surrounding agencies. And then as our, as part of the pilot programs, as part of the roads and trails plan, as part of recreation management generally, we're thinking about expanding our roads and trails early detection rapid and response program for invasive plant management. So we do this currently with One Tam's collaboration where we survey roads and trails for invasive plants. It's a way for us to get to those species early so that we don't have a new outbreak of something that's going to be detrimental or impactful to the watershed. And as we think about recreation, we know that recreation can be a vector for invasives. So we just want to acknowledge that and expand this program. So where we are tonight is we're presenting the draft Recreation Management Planning Feasibility Study to the board. This came about through a series of workshops that the community engaged in and participated in providing input. We've tried to design these strategic opportunities to take steps in the direction of access and recreation planning, but not going so far initially so that we could gather data, make informed decisions and recognize that there's improvements that we can make through being proactive in our visitor management and stewardship offerings on the watersheds. So our intention is to bring back a review of this document at the March 21st and discuss an acceptance of the final document. But tonight we're here to take, answer any questions that you might have about the document and take input as we finalize it.
Sean, thank you very much. Brian, thank you very much for the presentation and all the work that's gone into that. So with that, I'd like to open up for board commenter questions. Larry?
Well, like all of you, we're looking forward to see what the folks are going to say. So a great job. And I think we're getting there. It's been a long trek, as you said, but we're seeing the end zone at least.
Sean, can you talk a little?
Sean, can you talk a little bit more about the next steps in the process to further define trail use both for these pilots as well as for trails that we might protect going forward?
So if we acknowledge and accept this document in March 21st, we'd be, we put a timeframe in the feasibility study, kind of trying to show a timeline for us to advance these various strategic opportunities. The watershed zoning framework that we've put out there is really outlining kind of an abiotic, biotic and patterns of use review when we're thinking about trail planning. So thinking about how we can protect those sensitive resources, thinking about the patterns of use and acknowledging that there's ways that we can plan to better support people's access on the mountain that one protects resources and two provides an experience that folks are looking to have. And that experience, right, is if you want to hike, that you know where you can go and you can hike. If you want to ride your horse, you know where you can go and ride your horse. If you want to be on a bike, you know where you go and ride a bike. And trying to acknowledge that we need to share the trails, but we also need to separate use in some cases to make sure it's safe.
You know, I, I do want to address the group here today, how wonderful it is to see such an engaged community that Marin is represented in this room. And it shows that Marin Water really is a unique water agency, right? This is, this is not a typical set of water agency discussions, but we're handling stuff that typically state parks, county parks and federal parks handle. So I think we've done a fantastic job of, of including the public, engaging with everybody and trying to have a balanced view of how we, how we approach use of the land and protection of the land. And it should be recognized that we have the best spotted owl habitat in the world on Marin Waterland. We have the best coho salmon creek in the North Coast and other endangered species that we're careful and thoughtful stewards of. But being the first recreation and watershed management plan that this agency has addressed in over two decades, I think it shows this board has a willingness to take on the most difficult issues that we are faced. And no, not everyone is going to be happy. In fact, I think everyone's going to be slightly unhappy in some ways, but I do think that this is a balanced, thoughtful recommendation that, that it focuses on safety and inclusive access, that it has pilots and checks and balances going forward as we measure how it works. I think that it recognizes our award-winning stewardship of the lands and protection of our biodiversity therein. And I think it's a, it's a flexible and adaptive as Sean that you mentioned, as, as we go forward and try to, try to extend our understanding of an evolving set of technologies and use and populace and an evolving environment that we're faced with, with climate change and the impact of climate change. Now I've also written a four-part suggestion for trail maintenance and recommendations that takes advantage of new technologies and innovative use of both QR codes that can help people understand how they can have more access to our lands, how they can potentially volunteer, how they can understand which trails they can use, how they can potentially donate funds, as well as potentially using a phone app that can help people get better understanding of where we are. We are an evolving agency. I think what you're seeing here is a giant step forward. Obviously it has a lot of work to do and I look forward to the next steps in the process.
You know, thanks, Matt. Thank you, Sean, for a really good, you know, piece of work that I know you've been dedicating a lot of time to over the years. But actually I want to start with a couple of comments that are a little bit personal and, and really directed more to all of you. And it's around decision-making and, and, and how, how I try to process that. You know, I, I think to begin iterating some of the points that were made earlier, you know, when our watershed was established as protected land beginning in 1912 with the formation of the Water District, Marin's leaders gave us an amazing gift, right? That provides 75% of our water, a unique environmental resource and of course, an ability to enjoy the outdoors literally at our doorstep. I think given how precious this gift is to all of us, like everyone else, it's so encouraging that so many in our community want to participate in its best possible management. So my thanks as well to all of you for being part of this recreation management planning process. Now, given how many there are of us that care about the watershed, it's not surprising, right? That there are diversity of strong views and feelings about the best ways to approach recreational management. And I'm sure none of you will be surprised when I tell you that I've heard from many of you and I've heard many of those views. So given all that input that I and, and other board members have received, often with very strong and differing perspectives, I've obviously had to think carefully about deciding on the paths and the staff recommendations that we're discussing tonight. I clearly have personal views on these issues, but I also represent the electorate, at least those from Division Three. So I have to represent your views, which again, can differ greatly. So how do I manage this? I guess this is something I've been thinking a lot in preparation for this meeting. And here's where I've landed. I believe that all of us, all the stakeholders in the watershed share basic fundamental common goals of sustaining our water supply, ensuring a safe space for enjoying the outdoors and maintaining a unique ecology. Don't we all agree on those points? I've also decided that the best strategy for achieving these common goals is to cooperate and be inclusive. We all, every one of us has something valuable to give to the watershed, whether it's slowing the spread of invasive species, maintaining trails to the best possible standards, spreading the word against dangerous or unwanted behaviors like campfires or trail poaching, and just helping each other when we're scared or in physical difficulty. So I don't think I can approach this discussion as deciding on one set of priorities against an opposing set of priorities. I don't think it can be either or any longer. I believe really the best and only way forward is to first recognize that every user group brings something valuable to the watershed. Board and staff have to understand these values, believe in these values and develop policies that leverage these values. Values, what do I mean by values? I want to give at least, give one specific example. X is for bikes runs volunteer programs to manage trails. And I've participated in two of those now. These programs often include schoolchildren like my middle school daughter. And on one of those trail building, trail maintenance programs, I heard Vernon Huffman give probably one of the first discussions around nature and the preservation of nature to my daughter and her classmates. Plants that are, that are unique, plants that are fragile under stress, plants that we need to watch out for like poison oak. And Vernon, I really wish I had paid more attention when you spoke about the poison oak. So that's just one example. I think there are many other values, but I hope we can all recognize those as we move forward with the policies that we're deciding upon through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, and these are really great comments by my fellow board members and I, I won't belabor or repeat many of them, other than to, again, thank all of you who are here. Like other of my board members, I've heard from many of you via emails, phone calls, running into folks on trails at the store, you wouldn't believe where I've received input. And, and which is, which is okay because I'm an elected representative and I, and I seek that input. That input helps me to understand the many different perspectives and they have been very, very diverse and they've often not been in alignment. And I've said over and over to all folks that I, I speak with, that from the start, I've wanted to see with, with respect to watershed management and our recreation management, that we have good information that is shared with all folks because I think that when it comes down to it, if we are all well-informed, we will make decisions that are good for the watershed and I think we'll find more agreement than disagreement. And at the same time, we, as the district, have a responsibility to provide leadership and to help develop that information and provide that information. And I think that is a really important facet of what we have accomplished with this feasibility study. And so I would like to say a, a large thank you to the staff and our consultant that have helped develop this information, garnered a lot of feedback and input from folks. And that's, that's a really important first step because if folks felt like they never had a chance to be heard, that would be a terrible beginning to what I know we are not done with. We have not, we're not completed with the process, but it's an important first start. And I think that that is really important to recognize. It's a very strong foundation for the success that we will move on toward and, and I believe that we will achieve together. I think that for a lot of folks, we, we had hoped that this, what started off as a recreation management plan would come forward with more specific alternatives. And we've fallen to more of a feasibility study that has helped us to explore the background information because I think that was an important foundational step that we needed to take. But there is more work to be done to, to really achieve our goal here, which is to align recreation management with our core goal of providing safe and reliable and affordable water to our customers and to protect our natural resources. As somebody who has a background in natural resource management, I understand the incredible biological diversity that our watershed holds and how important it is for the environment. I also understand that as we all saw during COVID, how many people took to our watersheds as a place of refuge and, and what it did for our souls, frankly, as we all sought places to safely be outside. We recognize how important a resource we have, how important it is not only from a water supply perspective, because it provides 75% of our water is right there, comes from our watersheds that we can see right outside our door, but also how important it is for our community as a place to recreate, as a place to learn and experience nature. So I know we have a lot more work to do and I know a lot of this will fall into our records, our roads and trails management plan, which we're going to, I think, need to change the title of to include recreation management because that's where we're going to need to hold it. And I think it's a good place to put it because frankly, it, it dovetails together with how we manage our, the landscape and how we use the landscape. And so I think that is, that is an important next step. And it's one, while we have not formally started, the roads and trails management plan update, we actually have by doing this process. And I want to make sure and I will commit to working with staff and my fellow board members to make sure we maintain the momentum of what we have built so far because we're not done and we have important work to do going forward. And with that, I, again, I really appreciate all the, the attention, all the care that, that all of you clearly have. I'm glad that we made a place where everybody could come together and now it'd be great to hear your thoughts and opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sean, a couple of questions. One, before I, I start, I'm excited to see that this plan is not a fundamental change to what we're doing currently. And we're taking a very responsible and measured approach to it, which is, which is a very good thing. And also appreciating the fact that we're gathering information or have a plan to gather information to help inform a very important process, Sequa, to reinforce our, you know, our responsibility to the watershed's health. And one of the things you touched on, I was hoping for a quick follow-up. You talked about negative impact based on trail removal and de-commissioning and then through a different trail use. You mentioned that County Parks is doing that. Do they require that as part of a trail? When they build a new trail, do they, or repurpose something? Do they have a negative impact requirement? You know?
They call it like a net environmental benefit.
Okay.
And I think that's the terminology we're trying to use as well. They have a similar zoning framework to think through when they use it and they are kind of recognizing that when you're closing social trails, you should be thinking about access and trying to improve both at the same time.
And is that something that we could put into this feasibility study as a requirement when we're looking at these pieces? Potentially, so I mean, is this, if it's best practice in the county, why would we want to move away from that, especially if it provides a benefit to our, our watershed? Because it's, it's interesting. It was an eye-opener for me to understand that there's no off-limits areas for hikers throughout the entire mountain and feel that that could potentially lead to additional impacts based on the fact that we're going into an area where we don't understand as the layperson, the impact, what we're stepping on or doing. And to be able to start eliminating some of those areas that are in, then encouraging that would be, I think, very beneficial for that.
So I'd be supportive of that as well, Sean. Thank you, Matt.
Matt, I know there were, that was a long soliloquy. Did I use up on my time?
No, 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 no. You're, you're okay.
Okay. Couple of questions then. Sean, just two things to start. One, you, you spoke nicely. I think that the, the, the study includes a lot of good strategies for monitoring the impacts of changes in recreation that might result from this study. But we experienced dramatic increases in watershed usage during the pandemic. And I know there was ongoing monitoring during that period. I saw you've referenced the, I think it's the health of the mountain report from One Tam. Do we know if, if, if the all of, what the results of, results were with key indicators of environmental health? Of all of that, that surge in increased use? That's, that's one question. You know, do we have any indications of, of the impacts of that, that surge in use? The second question is, you know, this, I'm, I'm, I really, you know, this pilot study for the e-bike class one caught my attention because in some ways, you know, we've been running a pilot study now for five years, right? With the, the lack of enforcement of e-bike access. Do we not have enough information now on the impacts of e-bikes on the watershed to move forward more quickly perhaps? Or with the next steps towards determining an access strategy for e-bikes?
For the first part of your question, what we saw when COVID was happening in regards to visitors on the watershed, the impacts that we are seeing relating to like these visitor amenities, right? We are overflowing our parking lots. Sanitation costs went up drastically, right? We increased the number of portable restrooms servicing of that. Trash receptacles got overwhelmed. We started a volunteer program around collecting trash because we were just having that issue. And it's like micro trash, right? But it happens when we're all out there. Those were the kind of impacts that we were seeing or biological monitoring data. You know, we didn't see big spikes and, and things that would tell us that there was an impact from those visitors on the resources. So that's what we have for that period and people can reference those documents if they're, if they're interested in that. In regards to the e-bikes, I think making a formal process for pilot, for a pilot program is really a step that allows access when we establish that. And it allows us to collect the information needed to inform kind of long-term, term decisions. So you can think about like, we have a baseline data now from our census survey about how many e-bikes are on the watershed. And then continuing to collect that type of information through the pilot period would be informative for just understanding how many people are using those types of modes of transportation, those types of bikes and to think through, you know, how they influence other visitors.
Thanks, Sean. I, I mean, I, I think it's interesting to note that, you know, some of the main, our key priorities for the watershed, beginning with water quality as number one and the sustainability of our water supply don't show dramatic or significant declines during these periods of heavy usage. And that's encouraging, understanding why I think the impacts were maybe less than we might have anticipated, might be useful in, in how we plan going forward. What is it that's working currently with respect, you know, that, and, you know, including a lot of increased e-bike usage of the trails, other types of bikes? There's something in there that might be interesting to, in guiding us forward. Thanks.
Keeping on the e-bike vein here for a second and not asking for specifics without information in front of you, but when do you think the e-bikes really became prolific on the watershed? Meaning, you know, not a day would go by, you wouldn't see one.
I kind of want to phone a ranger friend.
But which is completely acceptable.
You know, we've seen like an uptick in e-bikes, you know, as people started using them, right? And I mean, that thoughtful approach here is to do a pilot program because we just don't know what that uptick will continue to be, right? And so thinking about that, you know, probably five years ago, e-bikes were around, but not as prolific as they are currently.
Then I think as the price comes down for those devices and they're on the used market, we don't know how that'll influence people's choice of modes of transportation.
Understood. And I think run to you to your point about having a, a period right now, we're, we're sort of understanding the impacts to these. I think that for me is a, a positive sign enough to move forward with a pilot study as opposed to just jumping right in. Because now we have enough where, you know, we haven't burned anything down yet and, and showing good signs. So let's continue to see if it continues to make sense with the understanding that we can end this pilot in a heartbeat. Should it have any of the impacts that we're having, you know, we're mentioning as, as good data pieces for that? So that would be good. The other thing, I mean, I know we're stuck on our focus, excuse me, on these pilot programs. But one of the things I get concerned with is the other, the other associated responsibilities you and your staff have on the watershed, you know? And I'll go back to something that I'm pretty passionate about, the wildfire piece. So drawing resources away from your team to be able to do this, I don't think is really in the best interest. And so what I mean by that is when we look at these pilot programs, really try to incorporate the ability for the community to volunteer in a way that helps you, not creates additional work. And so that if we want to see progress on anything, and we ask the public to help us move the needle on this, because it is not the primary mission, but it is something that we're still responsible for. And yes.
Yeah. I think it's longer than five years because it goes back to Mike Swayze, who preceded you. That's what I recall. I don't know exactly when, how long have you been in that position?
I think almost seven years now.
Seven. Yeah. I'd say that's more in the range. What I remember is even eight or something like that, that the issue was coming up. And I too support the concept of the pilot program. I think it's a great idea. It's a good transition to look, how, how do things happen? What, what works? What doesn't work?
Right. And any other board comments on this?
Okay, great. Matt, I just, I just want to pick up on, on your point that, you know, there, there has been, we've heard a lot of discussion regarding the resources that recreation management can take and whether, you know, whether we can support, continue to support even greater demands on our, on our staff and our resources for managing recreation. And I think one thing I'm really interested in, and I'm afraid all the people with green circles are going to start throwing stuff at me when I say this, but with, with, with potential moves towards increasing access for, for bikes and piloting, uh, single track access now. I'm really hopeful that our biking community and all of our, you know, stakeholders there will also recognize the, the step as, as something of value, again, coming back to that word, that, that, that merits protection and responsibility. And what I mean by that is hopefully encouraging those, those in our biking community that might be inclined to poach to, to maybe, you know, restrict those efforts and, and, and help us maintain the legal single track that might emerge out of this process. You know, I really do feel there has to be something in return for positive movement. And I, and I, 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 I hope that we can develop ways for actually monitoring that, Sean, you know? How, how, how do we, how do we assess poaching levels? And can we, can we track to see if that's, you know, ideally declining as, as, as legal access becomes available?
I can't pass up the chance here now. So I mean, I think that fundamentally, we need to make sure that when, that with this pilot, that we develop a, a monitoring program, obviously. But I think it's one that we should make sure that we're listening to some input from the different constituents who have cares and concerns. The, the data that we collect is only as good as it addresses the questions that we have. And so I think that, you know, figuring out ways to make sure that we're identifying if, if poaching is becoming an excessive issue. You know, are we seeing an increase in, in negative interactions on the watershed? Other things that might be of value that help us to assess not only the success of it, but also how to, how to adaptively manage and, and address issues and hopefully early, not at the end of a three-year period and then suddenly declare something. But let's make sure we're, we're looking at that information in real time as much as possible so that we can make quick adjustments to and address problems as they pop up.
Okay. Without further board comment, Terry, we'll go ahead and take public comment, please. And as a reminder, we're going to set the timer tonight for 90 seconds. And that's out of respect of everyone's time. And I do ask that people yield their spot in line. If there is someone with young children that would like to make it home, please feel free to cut all the way up to the front so that we can get you guys back and well rested for school on a Friday.
I don't know who the kids are.
Good. First, the smaller one. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rowan Kelly and I'm nine years old. The trails of Mount Tam are really important to me because I love mountain biking. It's, it's fun and it keeps me healthy. I want to become a professional mountain biker and I practice on these trails every week. Mountain bikers are part of our community and we help take care of the land. We volunteer through MCBC and Access for Bikes to take care of our trails. And if I win a bike race someday, I'll be proud to say I'm from the birthplace of mountain biking Marin County where the best trails are. Thank you for listening.
All right. That's a tough act to follow.
Yeah.
But I invite additional children up that would like to speak, or parents are here with children that need to get home. Now's your opportunity.
Wendell in San Anselmo. I just want to thank the board and congratulate you on, I think, really threading the needle with this one. This is a really difficult challenge, obviously a very contentious issue. And I, I think you really found a, a prudent approach. And just on a personal note, I'm really thankful, you know, I've been, I've been coming up to the watershed for, for two decades. But when my daughter Ryder was born, we, we moved up to San Anselmo. I grew up riding my bike in the woods. And I really hope that she has the opportunity to do so as well. And I think this is a step in that direction. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to read your names five at a time. Please go up to the podium. Karen Hannah, Kathy Rish, Linda Navi, and Jordy Stevens and Rowan. Oh, Rowan, you already got, you're good. Thank you, Rowan. Karen Hannah?
Um, this is actually Kathy Brissow. Karen wanted me to go first. So I'm going to really address the e-bike issue. And I know you keep posting class one up there. But the problem is, is you can't define or segregate class one for class two, class three. And if you guys have a remedy for that, awesome, let every police force in Marin County know about it. Because they can't tell the difference between the bikes. So I'm going to be addressing that. So basically, e-bikes were created to ease traffic congestion on our busy roadways. They are pedal and throttle assist to start an engine. They're not bicycles that are electric. They're bicycles with engines. And so we're actually allowing that up there. It seems that when this idea of opening up the watershed to this user group, it was a class one, which was fairly benign. Now things have gone far beyond the original vision with the advancement of e-bike technology. We have class two and three, which are basically small electric motorcycles capable of high speeds. They have no place competing for space with pedestrians, equestrians and other recreational cyclists. As with all new technology, it takes legislators a while to catch up. I think automobiles and cell phones are a good example of this. At first there was no regulations and now usage, insurance and employment are all affected by the laws put into place. Why so dangerous? Because they're new. The history of the car shows us that it took years of regulation and education to create the laws to enforce consumer safety. With the advancement of these new classes of e-bikes, we're starting to see how dangerous they are. They're heavier and faster up and down hills. In China camp, a sixty seven, in twenty twenty-two, a sixty-seven year old died and lost control of his bike going off trail. September twenty twenty-two, a senior citizen was killed when struck by an e-bike on a bike path.
And this will be, sorry, you're just a little bit past ninety seconds.
Statistics, not out of forty-one calls were e-bike accident related. E-bikes were three times more likely to involve a collision with pedestrian. So please have a moral obligation to protect us out there. And if you can't, if you can't prevent class two and three then going up there, then please reconsider starting the mic, the, the e-bike until we really know what, what, what's going to happen with them and where they're going to land. Because it's not, it's not what it was.
Thank you. And then just as a reminder now, please, ninety seconds is respectful for everyone's time. Thank you.
Karen Hannah, Linda Navi, please.
Hello. I just want to say that I'm confused by why the water district seems to be thinking quickly of adding the new user group on top of the current user groups that already have increased so much for the water district to start looking into a recreation feasibility, feasibility, uh, study. The new user group, from my research and my own experience in this new technology, what we are seeing is an increase in accidents and injuries, and the technology keeps increasing, changing. But cities and municipalities are quickly learning they need to understand and put some regulations in place. I'm confused to where these motorbikes fit into the mission of the water district and their goals. In my research, I'm seeing new rules and regulations implemented recently in California and cities of Marin County. I have to wonder why and what the benefit to the watershed. In addition of the e-bikes, the mountain raises concerns about their compatibility with the water district's missions and goals. With the recent surge in user groups and inherent risk and technology, it's vital to consider the impact on the mountain's ecosystem, biodiversity and the safety of all users. In light of these concerns, I ask that you reconsider the proposed e-bike trial period for now. It is essential to examine the benefits of adding e-bikes to the mountain and weigh them against potential risks and impacts on the environment and other user groups. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lyndon Ovi. I'm president of the Marin Horse Council and I'm speaking today through that lens. There are some good pieces to this plan and there are some areas that have concerns for me and other visitors to the watershed who travel at slower speeds than bikes. I was very encouraged to hear Director Kush and Director Schmidt's comments about having some metrics and, and really saying there has to be a quid pro quo. Because the citation levels of bikes is the highest, other than parking citations that the water district issues. That there has to be an improvement there. There has to be compliance. And Director, I want to call you Matt, Director Sampson. I, I liked what you said in the beginning, that we do need metrics and we need programs that if we want to retract some programs, we can. You said something to that effect. So I think we need that flexibility in our adaptive management. The devil is in the details. We need to see metrics for compliance. What is going to, to tell us if it's safe, if it's successful? Is it a reduction in incidents? Can we use QR codes? Think Director Smith talked about QR codes. Let's include easier reporting for citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. After Jordy Stevens, please listen. Tom Cohen, Clarence Kane, Richard Pelzman, Chris Davis and Nick Stella. Apologize. Go ahead, Mr. Jordy Stevens.
Hi, I come here tonight to discuss not why e-bikes should have the right to be on Mount Tam and the watershed, but why they should not. The wish of William Kent, my great grandfather, the man who started the MMWD and donated the thousands of acres now under your stewardship, was to create a place where all people could enjoy the outdoors. And that the land he donated should serve the needs, quote unquote, of a democratic people removing privileges reserved for only a few. By my count, the MMWD has handed over over sixty, was handed over sixty miles of land and offers over eighty hiking and equestrian trails in the watershed and not one single dedicated mountain bike trail, not one. This, sorry. Now in the MMWD mission statement on your website, you promised respect and fairness for all the people in the community. Yet the, the recent studies show that of the people using Mount Tam in the watershed, mountain bikers outweigh hikers almost four to one. I see no respect or fairness in this. Lastly, reading the false claim from the Sierra Club that e-bikes have the potential to negatively impact the environment with uphill speeds of up to twenty miles per hour on sensitive e-bike trails is incorrect. Now we all know that mountain bikes demonstrate no significant difference in soil displacement than that of a conventional mountain bike. There are dozens of studies that prove this. So as stewards of this land, I urge you to not fall victim to the powerless lobbyists, powerful lobbyists in the Sierra Club. Instead, recognize that we, the mountain bike community of Marin, love this place, respect the mountain and deserve the wishes of all those who created this open space, that all people should enjoy this place, not just for the privileged few.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
I am, I'm Tom Cohen, live in Mill Valley. I'm going to start with several cliches. See if I can remember. The train has already left the station. You can't put the genie back in the bottle and the horse has left the barn. There, you could, you couldn't keep e-bike people off the mountain if you had armed guards at every trailhead. They're going to be there. I'm speaking class one e-bikes. I spoke before the Water District Board forty years ago, forty years ago, when the issue was, should we allow mountain bikes on the mountain? Same people were here. Younger, but they all opposed it for the same reason. And lo and behold, forty years later, it just seems to work. So I would ask you, don't spend a lot of money on things, studies, laws that will invite a lawsuit. And I would ask all of you, before you, don't, don't file a lawsuit, don't file a lawsuit. But you can also spend your money and your time doing things that we can work together to help e-bikers on the, and yourselves on the mountain. Thank you.
After Clarence Kane is Richard Pelzman. Go ahead, sir.
I'm Nick Stilau. Should I jump?
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Uh, hey, Nick Stilau. I am thirty-nine years old from San Anselmo. When I'm on Mount, Mount Tam on a beautiful day, I like to think that the rest of the world doesn't exist and it's just me and the mountain. But when I'm at home with my three young kids, raising them, I don't have that luxury. I have to understand what's happening in the world and the world around us is changing fast. And it's changing faster than I think people, humans can psychologically or spiritually keep up with that. When I hear about increased teenage depression, increased teenage suicide rates, increased teenage drug and opiate use and deaths, I can't help but think that those are actually related to the decisions that we all are informing and helping make here tonight. So I urge the board to consider that this is more than just kind of a hobby or getting kicks. The decisions that we're making here today are deeply tied to the physical, social, spiritual health of the next generation of Marin.
Good evening. My name is Richard Pelzman and I want to second the last three people that came up here. I think they had good things to say, so I want to put my support behind that. But also I want to say that, you know, I've been through all, I've been to all the meetings, either virtually or, or in person. And the thing that really strikes out for me is that the opposition, the people that are against e-bikes, I mean, I hope this doesn't offend anybody, but it seems like they're and I hope this doesn't offend anybody, but it seems like they're cherry picking worst-case scenarios. And I've been riding up there, and I hope I don't get too much of a reprimanding. But I haven't seen it. I just have not seen thousands, the floodgates open and thousands of e-bikes swarming all over and running into, I just don't see it. I think that what Director Kush said was correct, five years, it seems like a long time. And we've already done a pilot study in some respects. We haven't monitored that pilot study yet very, very well, and I hope we do in the next three years. But I think that metrics are going to play a big role. And let's set a goal, let's say, okay, if, you know, if we see thousands, we've got a problem. We've got to address it. If we don't, then we don't. That's all I want to say.
Clarence Kane or Chris Davis, please?
I'm Chris.
Oh, you're Chris, please. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Chris Davis. I live in San Anselmo. How lucky are we all to live here, every one of us? I hike, I picnic, I bike a lot on this mountain, and I love it. And one of the things that resonates with me as a member of this community is the e-bike issue. It's pervasive. It's a lightning rod for so many. And I think that there's an opportunity for all of us to come together in a meaningful way and make this mountain accessible for all of us, like we continue to try to do. One thing that I think is really lacking that we could take advantage of, when I think about Tamara Rancho and China Camp, I have a permit to ride there. It's fee-based, and you, Matt, you mentioned that this gentleman has diminishing resources trying to create resources dedicated to recreational use. You've got an army. There's, these green dots in here represent thousands of people willing to volunteer and build and develop and maintain these trails, thousands of us. I'd like you to take advantage of that. Thank you.
One, one last.
Hello, my name is Josie, and I'm representing North Marin Composite, and I love mountain biking, and I know that me and many others like me have grown up riding, hiking, running, learning, all on Mount Tam. And it's a really amazing environment that I would love to keep being a part of in all these different ways. But sometimes it can be a little tedious and maybe even unsafe when I'm riding these big chunky fire roads with, sometimes there's a lot of traffic. And I, and many other sports have these big facilities and fields and gyms, and I would love to have, and many, like, teams and riders all over Marin would love to have open access to amazing legal single tracks that we want to help maintain to ride and practice our sport and our craft that we love and we want to be a part of the mountain. My team, we require a certain amount of volunteer hours and service hours to be on these mountains and help the environment, help these trails, and just be a part of this community. And yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Clarence Kane, please. Okay, all right, the next, go ahead. Come on up.
That was my sister. She's awesome. And I'm an intern at Access for Bikes, and I also ride for North Marin Composite. And I also love trails, everything that she said. I love getting outside. It's amazing for my mental health. I love nature, hiking, all that jazz. And I would just, I'm so appreciative of you guys listening to our voices and just young people's voices and all that you're doing with these pilot projects. I'm super excited. Thank you for all your work that you guys are doing. I appreciate it.
Next five speakers, Debbie Raphael, Peter DeSau, or DeSau, Tracy McDermott, Patricia Duffy, and then Dan Kressman.
Good evening. I'm Rohan Metzler. I'm representing the high school mountain bikers of Marin County. And I'd just like to say again, thank you for listening to our voices tonight. I appreciate it. We are like the future of the Mount Tam and Pios watershed. We are the future users of these trails and this open space. We, like has been said before, there are thousands of us. I think Archie Williams alone has seventy-something riders on their team, enough to fill this entire room and then some. And we are all willing to work to maintain and build and help, like, create this wonderful space that we are blessed to be able to use. Another thing is, these fire roads that we're currently, like, able to use are unsafe for us. They're wide, they're off camber, they're loose, they're dry. And mountain bikers, and especially high schoolers, as the future of our watershed, deserve a safe place to learn and to feel like, you know, it's not, we're not going to run into someone, and it's, it's, we deserve a place to, like, learn and be safe. Thank you.
Wow. I'm Debbie Raphael, and I am an older person. So I just want to start, I was a member of the CAC. I feel like I've been tracking this very deeply for five years and more. I'm incredibly grateful to Sean and his team and the professional way this report was put together. There's a lot of work here, and as you have noted, there is a lot of competing needs for time and resources. And so to that point, I would like to get very detailed in my request, because I've worked thirty years in the environmental field, running public agencies, and I know the importance of language and the specificity and clarity for future meetings. So when I look at the language for the pilot study for multi-use and bike access on page 107, it's very confusingly written in my mind. It says, evaluate e-bike class one pilot program six to twelve months. So does that mean the metric is in six to twelve months? We've evaluated whether or not we're going to do a pilot? Or is it that we are going to actually implement a pilot within six to twelve months and evaluate it after three years? That's confusing, and I find the one ahead of it even more. Consider pilot study to evaluate. Like, I have no idea what that means. Is the objective to consider it, or is the objective to actually implement it? So these two things matter to me because I've been tracking this so deeply. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Patricia Duffy, and I've been hiking and biking in the MMWD lands and trails for about thirty years now. A few years ago, my niece said mountain biking wasn't going to work for me anymore. So I moved over to an e-bike, and it has transformed my life. You know, I bought a bike about four years ago, the e-bike. So this pilot program idea has been happening for many years, as it was already pointed out. I was not an early adapter, so it's got to be close to ten years, at least seven, eight years, that e-bikes have been on, in the lands, in MMWD lands. When I go out, I go up fish, I go up Rock Springs, I'm on Rocky Ridge, I'm on Bullfrog, Concrete Pipe. When I am on those trails, I see one, two, three people max. I am not running over anybody. I am not in danger of hitting anybody. The only danger is that I'm going to wipe out, and no one's ever going to find me. So I love my phone and my watch. There is no need for a pilot program. We've had a pilot program. This pilot program is going to cost money. I know my water bill's going up and up and up. We have the pilot program. We've already done it. There is no evidence of damage. Me and my bike weigh less than most other bikers out there, certainly less than a horse. So we don't need a pilot program. Let's save the money. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dan Kressman, Mill Valley. I'd like to thank the board and the staff for all the hard work you've done in getting us where we are today. One thing I think we could all agree on, that everyone in this room should agree on, it's raining out there, right? We should be delighted. For four decades, I've hiked most of the trails on MMWD lands. I've also ridden my horse on many of those trails and my mountain bike, and now I ride my class one e-bike as a ride leader for the state champion Tam High Mountain Bike Team. So I would just request the board continue to show equal respect for each of these user groups, and I'd ask, strongly ask the board to mandate equal access for each of these user groups. Thank you.
Thank you. One last time, Tracy McDermott and Peter DeSau.
How do you do? Some of you, most of you know my husband, Jim McDermott. My husband rode search and rescue for over twenty years. My husband rode search and rescue for over twenty years, and it was always some biker off-road, lost in the woods. Okay, and now that's probably twenty years ago. My question is, your mandate is to provide clean water and steward the watershed, the watershed. Nowhere, is there any mention of enhanced recreation? I want to know, and would be really lovely to know, who's going to pay for the infrastructure to host these millions of users that are going to come up? Where are they going to urinate? Where are they going to defecate? Where are they doing it now? Okay, this is the water, right, that comes down, and everybody's so concerned about how polluted it gets? Where's all that waste going to go? And Sean already brought up, he had to find people, dig people up to clean up the trash, to clean out the waste, to do this, to do that. We're talking a big investment, big investment. Okay? Is that, is that my rate money? Is that everybody here, our rate money is going to enhance this recreation? This group of horse people here, every one of them has a hospital story. Okay, and that's, horses aren't afraid of bikes. They are afraid of the performance of the rider on the bike being disrespectful and dangerous. Thanks.
Thank you. Next five speakers, Walter Greer, Brian Bruckner, Anita Hansen, Elizabeth Ireland, and Bob Middlestat. Please come up too, so that you can go. Walter Greer, go ahead, please. You don't have to also stand there. You can stand behind each other, so you guys can.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Walter Greer. I live in Fairfax, California. I'm a lifelong equestrian. I came in tonight with a whole different idea, and now that I'm up here talking, it's like, I just wish we could all get along. I was up on November fifth, twenty twenty-one, approximately four sixteen. In the afternoon, my life was forever changed. I was verbally assaulted by a bicyclist. I have been trained since I was nine years old that when we are on our horses, we are to project the joy to everybody in our sport. I always say exactly the same thing. All I asked was, all we ask is that you slow down just a little bit. I was verbally assaulted, which caused a very tense situation. My animal became tense. I looked up. The next guy coming was coming way too fast. His bike skid and went right under my animal. She spooked and spun. I went off of her. I suffered a crack in the C2 of my neck, which basically is a broken neck. I had five broken ribs, and I suffered a extreme vagal nerve response. I basically crossed over and was dying. For any of you that are afraid of death, it's not all that bad, okay? I literally was, it was like being on a television show. The guy grabbed my gurney, raced me somewhere, looked down at me. He looked like I was looking in the face of an angel. He said, sir, how you doing? I said, the breeze in my hair feels good. All I ask is that if you're going to, I don't know why you're laughing. All I ask is that if you guys are going to implement the bikes, please, please try to consider the safety of everybody up on Mount Tam. Thank you.
Brian, Brian Bruckner, and then Anita Hansen, please.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Brian Bruckner. I live in San Anselmo. Been a resident for twenty years, and I've been riding in the watershed for about the last forty years. I was really encouraged to see finally some mention of bikes being allowed in the watershed. I would like to say that for me, the difference between a good ride and a great ride is running in to some horses on the trail. Makes me feel like I'm going back in time. I do feel, though, like a second-class citizen, and I feel like we don't look at the watershed with clear eyes. When I go into the watershed, I see a place that has, I believe, six huge dams, concrete dam with Alpine Dam. I don't know if you've ever been out to the Kent Lake Dam. It's massive. So as much as we want this place to be Yosemite Valley, it's not Yosemite Valley. It's a municipal water district, and it seems like there should be opportunities for all out there to share the trails. I mean, shoot, we truck trout up there for people to fish, but yet there's not a single track that I can ride my bike on. And I hear people talking about high speeds and dangerous situations. You put someone on a smaller narrow trail, it's going to calm things down a bit. So, you know, I would just like to say that I think we need to look at at these recommendations in the plan and come up with some smart ideas to give more access to people on these many miles of trails that were just ruled out of. We mentioned poaching up here a few minutes earlier. When one group is completely denied all access to those trails, that's going to be the result sometimes, and so we need to look at that and come up with some plans to address.
My name is Anita Hansen, and I'm a resident of Marin County and a rapier of Marin water. And mostly, I hike on the mountain. I'm a sometime mountain biker. And I find that during my twenty years of doing this, that most people are courteous. I have not really ever encountered a problem with bicyclist being rude, or they usually announce themselves that they're coming around. And so mostly, as a hiker, I'm just, as was said before, I'm just not seeing the problem that has been addressed. And I'm, you know, there have been some accidents. The survey that you conducted over that time showed one percent of how many people? Thousand on that survey? So I just, you know, urge you, if you're going to continue with this study, that you really consider the number of people who are biking, hiking, and what that percentage means. Thank you very much.
I'm Elizabeth Ireland. I live in San Anselmo. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm the mother you probably would have seen twenty-five years ago with an alley cat attached to the, my back of my mountain bike. I have pulled two sons up that, and years later, they're still, they're homeowners in Marin County and still avid mountain bikers. So our family has a lifelong love of the trails in Marin County. An e-bike has been a welcome and a necessary change for me as I have aged. And the day I kept up with my thirty-year-old son to the top of Mount Tam on my e-bike was a red-letter day for me. So now I'm a sixty-five-year-old grandmother, and I ride an e-bike, and I'm still enjoying the trails with my husband, my sons, and soon-to-be grandchildren. So I'd like to encourage the MMWD board to approve the use of class one, class one-only e-bikes on Mount Tam, and ideally this week. In the bigger picture, the Golden Gate National Recreation Association allows the use of e-bikes without issues. And the bikers in our watershed, look around, are very aware of where we live, that this is the source of our drinking water, which is so important to us. Our water quality does not have a negative impact. So I'm also a hiker, and I also don't believe there's a conflict between bikes and the hikers and those using the trails. And echo the results of the survey, which I was not surveyed, but I think that it's, you know, maybe a few rude visitors. So I don't think that's a valid reason to exclude cyclists or e-bikes from the watershed and the. So I don't think that's a valid reason to exclude cyclists or e-bikes from the watershed and the mountain.
Thank you.
So congratulations on the draft plan, but I encourage the board to put this issue to rest without further delay. Thank you.
After Mr. Bob Mittelstadt, it's Jonathan, Jonathan Brown, Philip Pillsbury. Pillsbury, thank you. Maggie Courtney, Andrew Levin, and Bill Keen. Please step on the side over there so that we can move along and make sure you guys get your minute and 30 seconds. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm a co-founder of e-bikeaccess.org. Our members are considerate, experienced cyclists who have earned their elevation, so to speak, and now depend on pedal-assisted e-bikes to keep us young, sort of young, and alive, and out of the house and off the couch. We believe in environmental protection as much as anybody in the room. When I see a horse, I stop, ask them if they want me to dismount. Last thing I want to do is run into a horse. Thank you to Sean and Ben for getting us as close as we are to equal access. I want to focus simply on the survey. It was a comprehensive survey. Over a thousand people responded. Most of them are hikers because they tended to stop for it instead of cyclists who tended to go on. A majority favored e-bikes, even though they were mostly hikers. And that majority favoring e-bikes is consistent with every meeting, every workshop, everything that we've had. The key thing is only 1% felt unsafe. And of that 1%, there were a lot of reasons ranging from coyotes to dirty porta-potties to rude hikers and bikers and other things. We want 100% of the people to feel safe. And so 1% feeling unsafe, I wish it were 0%. But I think the fact of the matter is you can't decide this based on 1%. So I encourage you to go forward with the pilot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Braun and I'm fortunate enough to have been able to be hiking on Mount Tam up pious in the watershed for six decades, over six decades. And what I want to tell you is that I think you have a crisis on Mount Tam up pious and on the watershed. There's a user group that is universally disobeying your posted and stated rules. The mountain bike community is universally ignoring your speed limits. They're ignoring the prohibition of riding on single-track trails. They're building illegal trails in the wilderness of the watershed. And I feel really strongly that you should not be moving forward with granting any further privileges to that group without getting control over the existing behavior, which is out of control in my observance and experience, to the point that I've been displaced. Unlike other speakers here, I feel I've been displaced from treasured hikes that I had in the past. I would never consider hiking on elder grade or shaver grade for fear of speeding aggressive bicyclists. And where is the equity in that? You know, some of us hikers are being displaced. The other threat that you're facing is another one from the motorized vehicle community. And that is I've now seen e-motocycles in the watershed several times. And the district needs to be looking at management and looking at enforcement to be able to control what is going to be coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Philip Pillsbury. I'm a resident of Ross. I've been biking on the mountain and hiking on the mountain for more than 35 years. And I'm also 75 years old. It was a few years ago that I no longer could make it to the top of the mountain without the assistance of a class one bike. And so I got one. And now I ride with my family. I appreciate the issues that you have. You've got to decide, are we going to have a pilot program? Are we going to do it now? Are we going to say we have enough data? I encourage you, as all leaders do, not to follow the anecdotal stories that come before you. Follow the data, the data that you yourselves have put together in an extraordinary series of surveys that form the bulk of the management plan that you have before you right now. The data says, of all the people surveyed, only 1% feel concerned for their safety on the mountain. Overwhelmingly, people on the mountain support bikes and e-bikes. People are not reporting serious issues that they have. There's nothing in the data that you have that says that, that mountain bikes and e-bikes are being cited more often than anybody else. It's just not right. So follow the data that you yourselves commissioned as you come to a decision. I encourage you to conclude that we've already had a pilot program that's successful.
Thank you.
We don't need another one. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Bill Keen. I'm from Fairfax, California and a lifelong resident of Marin. I spent my career in water, 10 years at Sonoma Water and then 13 years as a general manager of the Sonoma Ag and Open Space District. And it was never a question of whether we'd have multi-use when we did trails. We always did. But I'm just going to make a few points. I don't want to repeat what others have said. I want to talk about equity and diversity. Equity is by allowing users to have equal access. I think you've talked about that. But you're also indirectly addressing diversity. I've spoken to many in the Latinx community who ride and they don't feel welcome in the watershed. They've been told in the past by board members, talking about a licensing program, and that's untenable and unaffordable for them. And it's made them scared. I would urge your board, as part of your program, to really reach out to the Latinx community and invite them back into the watershed. They're amazing stewards. We have them out on our trail days and I think you'd really like that. Lastly, and this is a big one, Director Sampson mentioned this. I've seen information presented by the local environmental groups and I'm completely surprised that they don't identify the obvious impact to ecosystems and habitat fragmentation that occurs when hikers just don't use trails. I think this is a practice that clearly leads to habitat disruption and fragmentation in the watershed. I would really urge your board to look at that and think about how you regulate that and possibly eliminate it. Thank you.
Next three speakers, Maggie Courtney, Andrew Levin, and Phil Bossier.
Hi, my name is Maggie Courtney and I'm a resident of Kentfield. And I appreciate the opportunity to address you. I'm, I agree with many of the things that have already been said about supporting mountain bike and class one pedal-assisted e-bikes on Mount Tam. But I want to add another voice. And that is the flip side of the coin of what you're hearing from the youth who spoke so eloquently tonight about what this mountain means to them and the power that mountain biking has in transforming relationships amongst kids, with kids and their, their health, their awareness of their body and their families. My husband and I have literally spent thousands of hours riding Mount Tam on mountain bikes with our daughter, who is now a professional mountain bike athlete. And I, being a woman of a certain age, can no longer ride my regular mountain bike with her and in fact, can only ride my e-bike with her on her rest days. But, but that is time that is so cherished. We have a family bond that was built with hours of mountain biking, but that's not the important thing. The important thing was the hours of talking on that mountain. Imagine a middle school girl with her dad on the mountain for three and four hours at a time. And now a 28-year-old woman with her dad on the mountain talking. And that is what I really want to be able to preserve with including e-bike access on Mount Tam. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Levine, Phil Bossier. Okay, I'm moving on. Andrew Levine, Joanna Jones, and Erin Thompson. Andrew Levine, Joanna Jones, Erin Thompson, please.
Not to be confused with Andrew Levin, that's a different guy. All right. Most I just want to say, since we're all talking about how old we are, so for over 50 years, I grew up here, going up on Mount Tam, riding my bike before it was illegal and taught me to love the environment. Led me to get myself educated college and grad school in water resources. A 30-plus-year career at Water District, another water district protecting the environment. But all, all the while riding my bike up there, that exposure to the environment is what made, made me be who I am today. My education, my career, what I taught my kids and all that. And we shouldn't take that away from anybody. And anyone who thinks that the mountain bikers are not environmentalists clearly hasn't spent time out there with folks. But how much we care about the mountain and how much we see, one of the cyclists mentioned, she's out there, she sees nobody. Me too. I ride out there every day. And once you get a mile from a trailhead, you don't see anybody. One last quick thing on the e-bikes. Anybody can, anybody with two minutes of training can see the difference between a class one and a class two e-bike. The class two e-bikes, which are also mostly being sold as class two e-bikes that are actually electric motorcycles, easy to spot, not a problem. We don't want those on the mountain either.
Thank you. Joanna? Joanna Jones? After Ms. Joanna Jones is Erin Thompson.
Hello, and thank you so much for doing this process. I really appreciate it. My name is Joanna Jones. I live in Mill Valley and I'm the president of Access for Bikes. So if you listen closely to what the mountain bikers are saying here tonight, we want to reduce conflict. We don't want to run into a horse. We don't want to piss off a hiker. We don't want conflict. This is our mountain and we want to share it. And there are proven ways in trail systems to reduce conflict. You have one-way trails, you have odd-even days, and you use bell boxes. And we can look at a bunch of systems that have successfully adopted this. And that's what we're asking for. Lastly, I just want to say, sorry, just want to talk publicly regarding e-bikes. I would urge your board to take a look at the e-bike pilot study that was done at China Camp. This was done two years ago. A trailside survey yielded no physical or social impacts noted by users throughout the whole China Camp system. And this was a survey done with over 200 trail users out there. The data's out there, so let's follow it. Thank you.
After Mr. After Mr. Erin Thompson is Dolores Moscada, Win Gilliland, and Jonathan Freeman. Go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
Okay, good evening. So I've participated in some public feedback collection exercises in the past that felt perfunctory and we're obviously railroading towards a predetermined outcome. And I don't get that impression at all here. So I want to start by saying thank you for your thoughtful consideration on this. My position on this is generally well represented by Access for Bikes. So I urge you to listen to Vernon and his team. They've got it right. And also listen to those who have correctly pointed out that you've had an e-bike pilot in, a pilot program in process for many years on the mountain. So you have data to look at already. As a bike shop owner, I have a particular financial stake in these decisions. I don't sell e-bikes or mountain bikes if people don't have a place to go ride them. But that is not why I'm here tonight. I'm here, I'm a bike shop owner because I support mountain biking. I was a mountain biker first. And as a parent, I want to see both analog and digital cycling options available on a diverse menu of activities when I bring my family, my wife and my son to come explore Mount Tam. Thank you for your time.
Dolores Moscada.
Thank you so much, board, for this meeting tonight. It really means a lot to all of us. Thank you for the shorter microphone, too. I've been a Marin resident for 30 years and I've biked, hiked, done everything on the trails of Tam. I love mountain biking. I have a preference, but I'll do it all. And my partner's at the top of Tam, you know, looking over all of us and longtime cyclist. And I really want to support like multi-use in the ways that we've been talking about, like odd-even days as what was mentioned before. So I would just like to support everything that you're wanting to do. And we have a myriad of people who want to support all the efforts on the trails to make it safe for everybody and so that we can all enjoy them and for our future, you know, youth to enjoy as well. So thank you very much for your time tonight. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Win? Win Gilliland? Jonathan Freeman? Okay.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Freeman. Just one second here. Better. So I'm with e-bike access as well, along with Bob, a few other guys here. We, here in this building are a part of the environment. And as a longtime ardent environmentalist who worked on preserving the Amazon rainforest, that became clear to me when we saw civilization, hundreds of people there, hundreds of thousands. We're not separate from the environment. This building, well, humans got here 10,000 years ago. They saw lions, tigers, camels, mammoths, beavers as big as a W bug, all gone within a thousand years. Since then, human beings have manipulated environment and controlled burns, which altered wildlife plants and destroyed many newts. Humans then created trails, fire roads, put up telephone poles. They destroyed the pristine beauty of Mount Tam. So if we're going to have like this, this, this track, this trial period, what's your baseline? Is it 10,000 years ago? Is it 15 years ago when bikes first appeared? So what about when, when fire roads were created and when truck, big trucks started spewing pollution to the air? You guys haven't ticketed e-bike users. There's only seven ranges for 20,000 acres. It, it's not going to happen.
Thank you.
So no, no, no trial. Just get those e-bikes going. Come on. And the law already says, as we know.
Mr. Kim, thank you for your time. Your minute and 90 seconds is up, sir.
The law already says we know that they are allowed, which is have to. Thank you.
Kim O'Brien, Barry Spitz, and Tom Boss.
I'm wearing a cowboy hat. I have an e-bike too. I love it. I ride it in the streets. I ride horses and I, I too have lots of friends who have been hurt. And that was through somebody riding fast. My experience is almost everybody, you know, works really hard to get along and get together, you know, and work together. What I've noticed as far on, is on the, okay, so we're talking class one e-bikes. Class two and class three are growing and I'm noticing that they're growing faster, the speed is more. And a lot of time I spend is out on the Bohem Marsh where we have two class two e-bikes and I've seen huge displacement of senior citizens. So in the trial, would you please monitor that? And then, you know, we're all, we all are working together and I want us to work together. So what about a big fine for people who are disobeying the rules? Whether it be a hiker or a rider or somebody on their, on their e-bike. We need, we need a stronger enforcement system for the small few who are making it dangerous. Thanks.
Thank you. Barry Spitz, then Tom Boss.
Hello, thank you. My name is Barry Spitz and I wrote the book, Tam Up Pious Trails. And I've taken, I just was counting in my mind, at least 10,000 hikes on, in the watershed. And I could barely remember any that do not have marks of illegal bikes on them. So I have no illusions about these programs are going to be obeyed and everybody's going to get along. The buzzword is inclusivity now. It's all over the place. It's not what it is. If you allow bikes on the mountain, it's exclusive to the hikers. And in today's New York Times, I didn't even plan on this. Fire from e-bike battery killed a young New York journalist. You guys are guardians. You guys are guardians of the, so concerned about fire. How can you allow motorized vehicles? I remember the battle against all-terrain vehicles. That was decades ago and we won that battle. What are you guys thinking of to allow electric bikes? And the danger of fire, which would destroy all these lovely homes that we've heard about. So please be, be very careful in what you approve. Thank you.
Thank you. After Mr. Tom Boss is Tony Craig and Alan Hutchings.
Good evening, Board. First of all, I just want to thank a lot of folks and starting with you all, staff, the consultants for getting us to this place. I'd like to thank the, the conservation community for getting engaged and, and teaching us some things. And my friends at Access for Bikes and the many high school teams that have come out tonight on a school night to, to advocate for equity on Mount Tam. And the fishermen and the equestrians and the many other stakeholders. Thank you for participating in this process and getting us to this place. I was hoping for 40, 50 miles of sweet single track tonight, but I'll, I'll settle for a couple of pilots and an update to the RTMP. Joking aside, these are important first steps and they align with MCBC's approach of advancing proposals that are intelligent, measured, and thoughtful. Projects that address conflict, anticipate hurdles, and have environmental components. I'm especially happy to see the abundance of information and data sources related to, to the health and the biodiversity of the mountain referenced in the, in the document. So thank you for that. Yeah, and there's, and there's lots of other things that I just want to call out that haven't been brought up. The Trail Ambassador volunteer training, I think is going to be huge for maintaining these trails for hikers or equestrians, whoever's using them. The Wildlife Dose Ambassador Program, I'm looking forward to that. Watershed signage, we've been hearing a lot of comments that we could do a little better there. So anyway, yeah, this is, there's lots of win-wins. Let's make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tony Craig, Alan Hutchings, or Julia, excuse me, Via Lusit? Sorry.
Good evening, Board. Thanks again for your service. It's good to see some fresh faces up there and a friendly one from Mill Valley and one from San Onofre. My name's Tony Craig. I'm a San Onofre resident. I'm an equestrian. I'm a hiker. I used to be a trail runner, but after the third knee surgery, I became a mountain biker 15 years ago. And that's how I accessed the mountain. So I'm not here just to request more access for bikers, but for all groups. I think we should just get along on the trails. I grew up in Solano County where I did a lot of cross-country running in Solano, Napa, Sonoma. Then I started riding there and all user groups get along. So more, more access for user groups and a little bit more access for bikes, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you. After Alan, or please have Julia and then Shirley Fisher.
Hi, my name's Alan Hutchings. I'm a resident in Mill Valley. I also do bike tours here in Fairfax area. I've had the opportunity to ride in places like Oregon where land use is managed, both for hikers, for bikers. Directionality is put into place and it's very, very safe. I ride Mount Tam. I live in Mill Valley. I only ride the fire road. I respect the rules that are out there. I don't want to get a ticket. I don't want to spook hikers. I'm also a member of the recovery community here. And I take people out from our meeting on Saturdays up to the mountains to help them with recovery, to help them stay sober and get sober. And so mountain biking is a huge part of my well-being. And also I believe the future of this community and people who are recovering from addiction. I think that the social trails could be, could be left untouched for now until we can figure out some type of usage. You know, multi-usage trails, mountain bike friendly trails. I just went down to Santa Cruz over the weekend and I rode the Flow Trail down there. Managed by the Santa Cruz Trail Stewards, I believe. It's a biking trail. It's well-managed. They shut it down. When there's damage, they have volunteers from all over the place. I also donate to Access for Bikes and I'm a huge supporter of what Vernon's doing in this push to free up legal trails. If we have more legal trails, we will stay off the illegal trails. So thank you.
Thank you. Julia. Of Beelish, thank you.
Hello, Board. My name is Julia and I have a very long resume of mountain biking activity in Marin. From being on the Board of the MCBC, a member of Access for Bikes, the President of the Stafford Lake Bike Park. Absolutely the longest-tenured high school mountain bike coach in the United States of America. I'm also very active in a lot of things in Marin, including the Library Board, the Marin Conservation League at one point, and the Smart COC. And really importantly, I want you to know that I am a farmer. I'm a sustainable farmer. I am very tuned in to agriculture and I actually sit on two water boards, like you guys do, in Glenn and Tahama County. Dealing with SIGMA and Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. I'm up here tonight to basically thank you guys for putting this feasibility study into, into consideration. To thank Sean and his team for all the work that they've done. I'm incredibly impressed with how thoughtful and balanced this project is, or this feasibility study is. I know that everyone in this room, bikers, hikers, equestrians, we all want the best for the watershed. There is no doubt that everyone here wants to preserve the natural beauty, the ecology and the biology of this mountain. I know I do as a mountain biker and I know I speak for many others here. It is important for us to be ambassadors of our sport and to be stewards of the land. I don't think that we have ever shown you that that is not the case. Lastly, I encourage you to talk to Max Corton and his group at the Marin County Parks. I work very closely with them and I've been through the RMTP with them for the last 10 and a half years with Linda Dahl. They've done an excellent job.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Shirley Fisher, Valerie Fates, and Brian Estel.
Hi, good evening. My name is Shirley Fisher. I'm a resident of Santa Fe. I've been hiking Mount Tam for 40 years. I want to speak to you tonight about equity and I want to voice an unpopular opinion. I would like you to decrease access to the watershed. You're being strongly lobbied by well-organized, well-funded, very vocal bikers about creating equity for mountain bikers on our watershed. I would like you to consider and focus on equity for a group that is not organized, has no funding, does not appear at meetings, doesn't write letters to the newspaper, like it's been happening every day this week. Wildlife live on the watershed. They are not visiting for recreation. They live there. And their natural cycles, their very lives depend on being given enough suitable habitat to survive and reproduce. In contrast to what bikers are being requested, requesting, my vote is to keep humans out of all areas where there are, present are no humans. Reserve areas for animals. Make areas where humans are permitted, minimize human disruption and maximize habitat protection. Do not yield to the relentless pressure to turn the entire mountain into a sports arena for recreational pleasure. In all of your planning, please give highest priority to habitat protection. It will help the animals. It'll help us in our water supply. I concur with previous comments about compliance, monitoring, and enforcement that needs to be done. Special comment, please monitor the Benstein Trail more. I've been driven off the, the trail there by speeding bikers multiple times in the last months.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Valerie Fates, please, or Fates, Brian Estel, and then Chris Cook.
Hello, my name's Valerie Fates. I recently moved to San Onofre with my partner after completing veterinary school. We're big mountain bikers. We've already started volunteering with Marin County Parks to do some trail work and just get involved. And I just really like to encourage you to continue with planning for access for mountain bikes on the watershed. I think there are certainly thousands of us who are more than happy to contribute our time and our effort into building safe trails for bikers. And I think that building these trails that are biker-exclusive is going to make it much more safe for hikers and equestrians on their hiker and equestrian-exclusive trails. Because right now, like I certainly don't want to go out and run into a hiker or an equestrian on the trail at high speeds on a fire road. So I just avoid the fire roads. I don't really bike on the watershed because for me, it's not really accessible. But I just wanted to say there's so many of us that would be happy to build these trails and make it more inclusive for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Estel and Chris Cook, please.
And then Chair Sampson after Mr. Cook. I have to go to those on Zoom.
Hey, how you doing? My name is Brian Estel. I've been a professional mountain bike racer for the last, for over 18 years. And now I'm a full-time coach. I work with thousands and thousands and thousands of riders in person, anywhere in Marin, Santa Cruz, Oregon, all over the country. Ages range from nine to 84, I'd say was the oldest rider that I've worked with. And the goal for all these riders is the same thing, is safety and capability. I love that the younger riders here are getting stewardship education early. And I think that, you know, the earlier you can start this education, the better. I think the problem is in e-bikes or user group education. There is a big difference between Class 1, Class 2, Class 3, and it is pretty easy to see. And again, that comes down to education. So I would say now is the time to start with that education.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Cook. I'm from Fairfax. Just want to say thank you to you guys, you know, for putting on this process and for dealing with us through it. I'm sure it hasn't been easy. There's a lot of opinions, obviously. I just want to say I was an environmentalist long before I was a mountain biker. But then you move to Marin and, you know, the birthplace of mountain biking, you buy a bike. You go out and you try to figure out where to ride it and all of a sudden there's a sign that says no bikes allowed and it's a very confusing feeling. I was never under the impression that bikes caused more damage than equestrians or hikers. And it was just a way to get out into the environment and, you know, learn how to be in nature and enjoy yourself. One of the things that I heard a number of people talk about that I agree with is, you know, directional trails, specific use trails. In, in regards to safety and inclusivity, making everybody happy. You do need to sometimes dedicate where something goes and where something else goes. As bikers, we will respect that and respect the desires of the hiking and equestrian community by staying off those trails if you give us a place to ride. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank the people on Zoom for their patience. The next two speakers, the next two speakers, Laura Sheridan and then Nona Dennis. Go ahead, Ms. Sheridan.
Hi, thank you, Marin Municipal Water District Directors. My name's Laura Sheridan, Director of Watershed Alliance of Marin. And I've been hiking on Mount Tam for 50 years and I live on the mountain in Mill Valley. I've attended almost every community outreach event and have spoken several times on behalf of the Sierra Club. Not today. I'm speaking on behalf of myself. And I'm asking you all, Board members, are you representing your constituents? Four times, there are four times more hikers that use the watershed than cyclists and that's in the feasibility study. This is not widely known because hikers and non-cyclist groups aren't organized and don't perpetually demand more access. Yet the numbers from eco-counters and surveys provide this clarity. Alta's annual usage estimates activities are hiking 41%, dog walking 16%, running 7%, nature observance 22%, mountain bike 16%, and e-bikes 3%. Though e-bike numbers are higher because they're not reported. And we have a lot of scofflaws on the mountain and scofflaws threaten elders. I've been a victim of it many times and I've reported it over and over again. In fact, there are rare instances where I'm not seeing violations. I've had too many close calls with mountain bikes on single-track trails and experienced multiple terrifying scenarios that I've reported over the years. These numbers reveal that the demands made by cyclists and cyclist groups are contrary to what majority other groups want to experience.
Sheridan, for your patience and your comment. Next speaker is Nona Dennis and then Chris Tufts, for Tufts.
Oh, you can hear, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Dennis.
Okay, thank you. I'm speaking in behalf of Marin Conservation League. And I'm only going to address a, a portion of the, of the issues that the study raises. We want to thank, first of all, the staff and consultants for putting together a very comprehensive document. And it is extremely important to have all of that information in one, in one place. It has a lot of familiar information, but it also raises, poses some propositions which are not really quite the magic one. I've been listening to all of the.
Nona, could I just ask you to pause just for a second? If we, I know it's, people are looking to leave, but it's really difficult to hear the speaker. I want to make sure her voice is, is heard on this. So if we just try to maintain quiet and then we'll go ahead. Nona, we stopped your clock, so you still have time.
Thank you. You stopped it for 20 seconds, right? I want to really focus on next steps. What I've listened to is an endless litany of, of supporters for bikes, for more bike access. And I want to say that the heart, really the heart of the strategic opportunities is revising the road and trail management plan itself. This will be a major undertaking. The devil really is in the details. What will the zoning look like? Where will specific roads for hospitality be changed in use? Trails modified to accommodate bikes where pilots might occur, directional pilots? What decommission might be paired with bike only and so forth? We are looking for the details. You kick the can kind of partway down the road. But the next steps will need careful scrutiny. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis. The next speaker is Mr. Chris Tufts. If you can just give me a second here. After Mr. Chris Tufts is Sammy Owen, Isabel Frainer, and Greg Feehan. Go ahead.
Yep, thank you very much. I'm a third-generation Marin resident. I hike, I run, I ride, and I rate pay. And well, for part of that, so do my two children. As mentioned, access to nature is vital. My wife, a pediatrician, has to literally prescribe doses of nature for children in the Bay Area to maintain and restore their mental health. So expanding access is critical. I want to make a point that we need to not let the 1% control the 99%. I've heard pointing references to a fire in downtown New York City as a wildfire threat. Or say that cyclists want to turn the entire mountain into a sports arena or that we universally disregard the rules. I just want to make a, maybe a note to Sean and staff based on that to say that pilot studies must, must depend on objective measures. And not episodic reporting for proposed violations as we do these pilot studies. Because there's clearly some folks who are already a little bit against the idea. I think I might call them the 1%. So I ask they not control the 99%. Thank you. And thanks for the study.
After Mr. Tufts is Mr. Sammy Owen and then Isabel Frainer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Sammy Owen. I am a rate payer for the Water District. I also am a professional and I work in large-scale land conservation. And I recreate on the watershed. I'm a hiker. I'm a trail runner and mainly I'm a mountain biker. And tonight I really want to thank the following people that for these past three years I've been interacting with. Sean Horn, Ashley DiAntonio from Alta, Matt DeYoung from Santa Cruz Mountain Trail Stewardship, Suzanne Wieland. Oh my gosh, Suzanne, everyone, volunteer. She's the best. Max Clifford, Max Circle, all these, some of these people work at the Water District, some of them don't. And the whole Water District Board. I'm so grateful that you all have taken up the time to look over this. It means the world to me as someone who recreates on the watershed. And honestly, the watershed, being on it, it is crucial to my mental health. And I am so grateful that we're approaching it in a way that we can protect both the flora and fauna, which is utmost of importance. But I'm just really grateful for all these people and these partners that have helped out and that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Isabel Frainer, please.
Hi, I'm Isabel Frainer. I am a third-generation Marin County resident. I grew up in the watershed. As a child with a learning disability, my parents were dedicated to getting me out in the watershed every weekend. And I can really say that trail running and hiking were my first loves. My first running coach, Barry Spitz, spoke earlier. After injuring out of running, I really fell in love with mountain biking. I've now been riding over 10 years. And time and time again, I saw among myself and my teammates that we, when we were riding on fire roads, we were crashing. and my teammates that we, when we were riding on fire roads, we were crashing because they were off camber, they were too steep. They were more, really more suited to rescue vehicles than for human recreation. And I can confidently say that a lot of concussions would have been spared had we had more single-track trail access. I'm really saddened to see that even as mountain bike grows in popularity, today's youth don't have any more access than I did. I am imploring you to consider the addition of odd-even days or directional trails for the safety of today's youth and the longevity of their outdoors access and their love of our watershed and their investment in the watershed's longevity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Greg Feehan, please.
Hello. I just wanted to say thank you to the board and the whole Water District for such a robust and depth, deep study of the, of the plan, and I appreciate all the work that's behind it. I know there's a lot of different constituencies to balance. My, my, I want to put my weight behind just thinking about the next generation and the, and also the, the youth of today that ride bikes. I'm a coach for, I've been a coach for several different high schools, and it's just a huge outlet, just like everybody, all the adults out there that use the land, you know, we need it for our, our mental health and our souls. The kids need it even more, and the, you know, there's, the kids that participate in mountain biking, they don't have outlets for other sports. This gives them, if they weren't doing this, they'd be doing something that would be much more detrimental. I want to encourage not just allowing mountain biking, but also expanding the single track to give them more opportunity. And I'm, I'm confident that that would reduce, if they were given more opportunities to, to have single track in the, in the, in the district. That would give, that would reduce the, the amount of infringement that people are referring to today. And of course, and people are saying violations are going up. Of course, they're going up because there's more people biking and there's less trails for them to access. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feehan. Next speakers are Kamal Abuhan, Patrick Linehan, and Larry Minnichus. Give me a second, please, so I can put the timer on. Go ahead, Mr. Abuhan.
Thank you very much. Hi, everyone. Thank you for the bus study. I appreciate it. I'm a longtime user of the watershed since nineteen ninety-eight. Love, love that whole area. I just want to bring to attention situational awareness for hikers, bikers, and, and of course, you question users and other folks. Please don't restrict access to and from the park via single track. I participated in the Finding Field Search and Rescue operation in Pleasant Hill a year and a half ago. Restriction to access to the park, to and from the access of the park could create issues, especially when you're tired, you need to get off the mountain. Is only a single track that's not allowed for mountain bikers or equestrians? They should have some access. I'm starting to notice now, especially around the Baltic area, that you can't get off the mountain. I like to, please allow the Class One e-bikers, because, you know, you never know. You may be in bad shape, and an e-biker will come by, and they may be your only link to get out of the, get off the park by contacting somebody to say, hey, I'm actually in trouble. Also, I'd like you to create signage with exit points to let the people know how to get out and make sure that your trail markers have some sort of GPS marker on it, so that when you're communicating with search and rescue, they know exactly where you are based on which signage you were involved with. Also, if you could, in the signage, create islands with the communication post that, hey, if you have to press a button, and they can triangulate your situation, and then, of course, they can find you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Patrick Linehan, please.
Hello, my name is Patrick Linehan. I'm a conservator. I'd like to thank staff, consultants, and the board for driving this three-year exclusive public process towards equitable bike access on the mountain. While some mountain bikers and new middle-aged e-bikers haven't behaved responsibly on the trails, I believe the emphasis should be on education and enforcement. All trail users need to slow down, say hello, be courteous to your neighbors, and yield to others. We all need to learn to share and come together to protect ecology of the mountain. I want to address the call for a McCarthy-style citizen reporting system. Throughout history, citizen reporting systems have often been tools of suppression, targeting minority groups, fostering distrust within communities. I think we all know this is not the ethos of the mountain in Marin County. That said, I have a great respect for law enforcement and rangers. Rangers are the leaders of these lands. The call for additional ranger enforcement have defined not the entered bad behavior of society. I think it's clear to everyone that people are poaching because the district is not providing what large, diverse, stable, challenging single track. This is obviously why people are building social trails. And by the way, not all these social trails are built by height. Bikers, most are unridable. Enforcement is dangerous waste of precious resources, potentially huge liability if someone is hurt during an encounter. I believe the district resources are better used for education for trail users, low-income subsidies for rate payers, and trail improvement. It's irresponsible to allocate additional resources towards enforcement and citizen reporting while asking for ratings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Linehan. Next speaker is Larry Minnichus, but after Mr. Minnichus is Kristi and Matthew Morado. Go ahead, Mr. Minnichus. Give me, actually, give me a second. Go ahead, Mr. Minnichus.
Good evening, all. And Terry, I hope you have a voice in, in the morning, after screaming all evening here. I, I want to just express a little frustration here. I was here in the eighties when we were discussing opening China Camp to biking, and promises were made, the same promises we're hearing tonight. We'll take care of the facility. We'll be out there. We'll bring forest out. And I'm asking, where are they? And you look at the mountain, and we're all using that mountain. And what are we teaching our children? When we say, if you give us more, we'll bring thousands to take care of the environment. You should be taking care of the environment now, and then work toward getting what you want, not the other way around. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kristi, then Matthew Morado. Hold on, Ms. Morado. Let me try to get this up. It's not working here. Actually, can you hold on for a minute? I need to pause. My timer's not working, if you don't mind.
Terry, how many more public comments do we have?
Let me go back. We have eight more.
Okay, why don't we just go ahead and take five minutes?
Okay, thank you.
So for the group, we'll take five minutes and be back here twenty-two after.
Thank you, Kristi, for your patience. I'm sorry. It's not working.
Yeah, I know nobody's there and everybody's leaving. I am, but I was just going to basically try to bring it back full circle and, you know, to say we have to respect each other, but that's nothing new, so I just lowered my hand.
What is going on with my timer?
Yeah, it's like, it's just went on the fritz. I can only see that one, but I can't see the big one. So the big one's not showing anymore on that. So I'm just going to have to go on what's there. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
He actually went out.
We're here. It is twenty-two after. If we could please just maintain respectful silence in the chamber here while we attempt to listen to the last public comments online, please. Terry, when you're ready.
Yes, thank you. Kristi, please, then Matthew Morado, and Scott Bartle, Barto Ball. I apologize. Go ahead, Kristi. Kristi? Okay, I'll come back to you. Matthew Morado, please.
Hello, and good evening. I'm Matthew Morado, and I'm a senior at Redwood High School. I'm grateful to have been able to participate throughout this planning process since its first meeting. And looking forward, I'm hopeful that the district will work towards many of the aforementioned inclusive bikeability initiatives and pilot projects, especially regarding single-track trails. I've seen firsthand, in myself and in other student athletes, as well as other recreationalists, the value that mountain biking provides cyclists at an experiential and personal level. However, I think it's more important to note the value that mountain biking provides the district and the watershed by connecting trail users with nature, as they're more likely to care about, for instance, water usage, invasive species, trail maintenance, and Mount Tam as a whole. I think it's time now that we use recreation as a tool to better invest cyclists in the watershed, as opposed to essentially limiting their footprint there, which has shown to be, to little effect thus far. I'd like to thank you for your time tonight and throughout this entire process.
Thank you. Scott Barto Ball, please, and then Kristi. Scott?
Scott Barto Ball here. Thank you, staff, board, and consultants, for all the work that you put into the Recreation Management Plan. I think the plan reflects that many voices have been heard. I feel that mine has been heard. And I think they, you've included a thoughtful consideration for the wide range of issues. I'm excited to see the pilot program in there, and I would encourage you to talk to East Bay Regional Park District about their Brioni's Pilot Program. It includes some of the aspects that are in your plan, talking about directional trails and even odd days. They're seeing a reduction in poaching and good compliance with trail closures for trails to be rehabilitated. Also, there's seeing generally good improvements and experiences for all types of trail users. I'm very thankful that Marin Water provides recreation in the watershed and demonstrates that recreation and conservation are complementary and not mutually exclusive. Hopefully, other Bay Area land managers are looking at your recreation and conservation approach and, and look to the example that you're setting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and thank you all to Zoom for your patience. Barbara Salzman, then Amy Worth, please, and then Kristi, if you're still around. Ms. Barbara Salzman?
Hi, I'm representing the Marin Audubon Society, as I think you all know, I usually do. And I first like to say that we appreciate the inclusion of, of information about the watershed resources, the, the plants, and the wildlife that use, use the habitat. We've been asking for that for a long time. I would say also, though, that, and especially for the northern spotted owl, which of course is a keystone and really a critical species for us to maintain. It's the only place actually in the world where it's doing fairly well, stable. But it, there, there needs to be more information on the nesting. It's the, the only, the only, not just nesting. There needs to be more information on the habitat and how that is being protected, particularly their, their prey species, primary prey, prey species, the wood rat. And I'd like to end, but we'll be, we'll be doing a letter and, of course, reviewing it more closely, but, the plan more closely, but I, I'm really struck tonight by the, the abundance of people that are, are really interested in their own interest. And, and I think that you hopefully will be looking at the watershed as a whole and the value for it as for the, the whole district and the world, really. The, the information that you have is probably limited because you're, you're getting it from interviews.
Thank you, Ms. Salzman. Amy Worth, and then Kristi, please. Ms. Worth?
Hi. Thank you very much for this great opportunity to voice our opinion tonight. I'm, I'm very impressed by the report. I have to go back and read those appendices in more detail, but I'm grateful for your thoughtful analysis and your willing, willingness to listen to everyone in our community. I agree with a prior speaker about providing more specific language on page ninety-two regarding both pilots. I don't understand quite what's being undertaken. And then I want to voice, maybe in the minority, and to second prior barber who just spoke, you know, the, the Recreation Management Plan mission does not supersede your overall mission of managing your natural, our natural resources in a sustainable manner. And that's going to mean some tough trade-offs, like maybe every types of users' needs can't be met. I think there's users not represented tonight, hikers, families with young children, seniors, students, bird watchers, educational groups. I also don't see mention of, of how other parks, and again, we're a watershed, we're a utility, how other parks, which have less restrictions than we do about our strategic resources protecting habitat. There's good data there on the very tiny percent of trails that they allow for mountain bikes and e-bikes. So that might be something to look at. Thank you. Thank you again for listening to all our views.
Thank you, Ms. Worth. Next speakers, Annabelle, and then Marissa Hoak, please. If you can give me a second. All right. Go ahead, Annabelle.
Yes, hello. This is, I'm Annabelle Heineman, and I live in Mill Valley. And I also work with MCBC, and I just wanted to thank the board and the Water District for all the work you've been doing throughout this whole process. I've been involved since the beginning. I'm the mom of three girls who grew up on the trails and fire roads of Marin. And honestly, biking has really formed much of who they are as young adults now, and has helped them to be happy, healthy, and well-balanced through, you know, some of the more challenging years of their lives. They're now at university. They are riding a lot. They're also coaching young riders and teaching them everything about what biking can bring to them. But they're also following the progress of this project, and they're really grateful to hear that the younger riders in Marin will have more access, hopefully, to trails than they had when they were growing up here. riders in Marin will have more access hopefully to trails than they had when they were growing up here. And just finally, last note, I'm disagreeing with many of the other speakers and I, I support what the suggestions around alternating days and directional restrictions for trail use. I think that's a great solution to minimizing conflict. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marissa Hoak, please.
Yes, hi, I'm Marissa Hoak and I have been hiking in the Marin Hills since the mid 1960s when I was a little kid and my dad was riding his three-speed on Fairfax and on Mount Tam before mountain bikes were invented. And we were all huge nature lovers and appreciators of our natural flora and fauna. So in doing any of these things, I think it's really important that we preserve the integrity of our natural environment while being able to bike and hike and ride horses in our natural environments. People say, oh, no, no, it's a recreational area. It's a watershed. No. It is a hill. It's mountains. It's, it's land. So yeah, it's nature. And there are animals, there are plants, and we need to preserve and protect them while we're also giving, you know, taking consideration. The earth is not made for humans. Humans are part of the earth.
Thank you. If I can still continue to get to Christie, if she's online?
I'm here.
Okay, all right. Give me a second because I have to use another timer. Go ahead, Christie.
Hi, Christie Domann, Fairfax resident. I had the fortune of growing up in Colorado, big open spaces, tall mountains and Fairfax is home in that my sons grew up taking their naps as babies under the redwoods of the Lagunitas parking area or park. And ultimately have grown up hiking and exploring and having curiosity and opportunities to connect with nature and then moving up into cycling. I also grew up as an equestrian and had to move away from the four footers because I could no longer afford them. And my bike is my means of, of transportation as I am not quite as young as I used to be. I have absolutely loved participating in this process from being able to hear the perspectives of different user groups, people who are very, very passionate. And oftentimes I feel that we've got a little PR issue where folks don't understand the fragility and the amazing resource that we have. And I would love to see increased educational components to help people understand this gift that we have to grow the stewardship because I think every person you've heard from are natural passionate users and protectors of this land.
Thank you, Ms. Christie.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience too. And, and that concludes our speakers. Oh, actually, no, I apologize. Mr. David Long popped up. Hold on. Mr. David Long, and then that's our last speaker. Go ahead, Mr. Long.
Yes, I'm, I'm David Long. I'm the co-president of the Marin Chapter of the Californian Aided Plant Society. And there, there are many good things about the report and will be, I think, probably submitting a letter to talk about the report in more detail, but, but two points. One, one concern that we have is that there's absolutely no recognition that there may be capacity limits on the watershed. It talks about the dramatic growth of recreational usage, but it expresses no opinion about whether there may be some upper limit beyond which the district will be irreparably injured. We, we know that other units, parks, not water districts, that is those devoted to recreation, not, not devoted to maintaining a watershed, are putting capacity limits like Yosemite and Muir Woods. No, no discussion of that. That's a huge omission in the report. And also the, the question is whether you can show the kind of environmental impact in one year on a pilot project is a very chancy question because what we have seen, if, if, if we were 200 years old, we would see what, what I would call death by a thousand cuts. And environmental damage does not come in great, you know, sweeps. You, you don't see it in dramatic portions. You see it by generation, by generation. And we've seen tremendous degradation on the watershed. And it's, it's that death by a thousand cuts that should be the great concern.
Thank you, Mr. Long. And that is it. Chair Sampson.
Great. Terry, thank you very much for facilitating all those comments tonight. And thank you again to the public, both online, here in the room that have, that have continued bliss on this journey this evening. It's 8:30 and we very much appreciate everyone's comments tonight. So with that, we'll close item number three. And Terry, move on to item number four.
Thank you. The next watershed committee meeting, special meeting of the Board of Directors is on Thursday, March 21st. And that's it for right now.
Great. Thank you. And with that, we'll go ahead and join the series meeting. Thank you.